Gartner, Franco, Heed, Parker, and Mayor Granitowski present.
Thank you. And Councilor Melendez did notify that he may not be able to make it. He may be able to get here a little bit later tonight, though.
Okay, very good.
And Madam Clerk, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Yeah.
The United States of America.
We too, the republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, this evening we have two public hearings. We have Roman numeral four A, 2023 09 2, changes to the Town of Groton Tiff policy public hearing. This is on page three in your packet, Madam Clerk.
Page three? Sorry, my pages.
Councilor Aubrey has joined us. Good evening, Councilor Aubrey.
Okay, Town of Groton, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold two public hearings on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 6:30 PM via Zoom US pursuant to resolutions adopted at the meeting held on September 1, 2020.
Hello, everybody.
Article five of the Groton Code of Ordinances, designation of scenic roads and the Tiff in consideration of alterations to 1206 River Road for alterations of River Road right-of-way in order to construct a new driveway, and two, to consider amendments to the Tiff policy. This was dated at Groton, Connecticut on the 21st day of September, 2020, submitted by the town clerk, that's in a coucher. Now, this was posted on the town website on that day, and it still remains there, as a matter of fact, which meets requirements of statute.
Thank you. So the hearing is open at 6:34 PM. And do we have any members of the public here to speak? Or did Mr. Reiner wish to present anything before members of the public speak?
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Just very briefly, the changes to the Tiff policy that we're proposing this time are very minor in nature. There's kind of three main components of them. One of the changes is formally making the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission our Tiff Advisory Committee. Secondarily, where the state law changed in the amount of time that was the minimum time that the Planning and Zoning Commission had to review changes to a Tiff district master plan. Before, it was an extensive period of time, it was 90 days. We're now bringing that back down to they have at least 10 days period of time, but they could take longer than that if they need that much time. But the referral time gives us some flexibility. In both instances that we adopted our master plan, we were actually kind of waiting for that time period to go through before we could then move that Tiff district master plan along. And the third comment, kind of proposed changes, a lot of them were minor language changes, some grammar, just some consistency with language, and some things how it reflected between the city and the town dealing with a joint Tiff district master plan. Nothing of substance, nothing that changed any of the policies or procedures, but more just making sure organizationally things were correct.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. And I don't have anyone that had written in to speak at this public hearing. Madam Clerk, did you have anyone who wished to speak at this public hearing? Okay.
Not for the Tiff. I only understood for the River Road, but I still don't see that person.
Okay, they are here. All right, so then if there is no one else to speak for the Tiff policy public hearing, then we will close that public hearing. And that is closed at 6:36 PM. Okay, we are on to 2025 592, alteration of a scenic road, 1206 River Road public hearing. Madam Clerk, I'm going to yield to you if we need to read the call again.
Now, actually, this is the second of the hearing that I did read. But I will reiterate that this is to consider the alterations to 1206 River Road for alterations to the River Road right-of-way in order to construct a new driveway, which was published on the 21st of September, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the public hearing is open at 6:37. And I believe we have, we had two people that were interested in speaking. I believe we only have one person here this evening, and that would be Tom Paul Antonio. Mr. Paul Antonio, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and then you may address the public hearing.
This is Tom Paul Antonio, and I'm at 1206 River Road in Mystic, Connecticut.
And did you wish to offer remarks, sir?
I do. I'd like to give first a little background about the work on the right-of-way that I've submitted this application for. The property that I own borders River Road for approximately 500 feet. I believe there you have in the letter that I sent the figures that depict this, specifically figure one and figure two. That shows the frontage of the property and the access points through the property over to the residence. There are currently two curb cuts. There's one to the south, which has the gate and posted as 1206 River Road. And the other one is to the north, and that's bounded by a row of rocks along the right-of-way. This particular northern curb cut was put in by the previous owner some time ago as he sold off hundreds of acres of fill from the property. In figure four or five, if you could look through the trees, you could see that there is a far expanse well into the property, which was as a result of gleaning all of this fill. That, I'll get into more detail, but that northern curb cut, which, and in fact, both curb cuts are adjacent to the property lines there. If not part of the property line, or, you know, within a foot or two, it's three or four feet. They're very close to the property lines in both instances. The residence gets its electrical power via aerial lines from River Road and travel approximately 700 feet to the residence. Since we've owned this property, we've had two trees take out our, take out the aerial lines. And so as a result, we have placed them underground. And doing this underground utility work, we cut in an access path along the northern boundary. Again, that's clearly depicted on the figures, especially figure number two. In addition to doing this new path, we are also contemplating selling off four acres of our property. That's shown in that shaded, I'm sorry, shaded section in figure one. As you can see, the existing gate at 1206 River Road almost exactly bisects the property diagonally, which, and that parcel is approximately four acres of land. So as I said, as part of putting in the underground utilities, we created this new path such that when we do free split off of this property, whoever purchased the property will not have our pathway, driveway going through their living room. The, the, the new curb cut that we're proposing to put in is approximately 40 feet to the south of the existing curb cut. And the reason why we're not going to use the existing curb cut is because the surveyor that we used to set up the property markers and surveyed this effort said that the slope of the terrain was too steep to go directly, you know, down to River Road using the existing northern curb cut. So that's why the new, the proposed new curb cut would be approximately 40 feet to the south of the existing one. Our change, this, this installation of this new driveway apron is in keeping with the Groton Code of Ordinances in that it does not encroach on or change the width, paving, or grade of River Road. Further, the intent is not to change the character or adversely impact the neighborhood. In fact, at that section where the new curb cut is, there are no residences directly across from it. There are no existing stone walls or mature trees at that portion of River Road. And if you look at figures four and five, you can see they're just saplings that are there. So now, with respect to the actual curb cut design that we're going to utilize, we're going to be following the Groton Road and Drainage Standards. It specifically calls out what, you know, for a single lane or dual-lane driveway, what the widths are and what the requirements are for installing subterranean material as well as a hardscape. I have also spoken with the town engineer, and my plan is to meet with him and do a walkdown of this proposed curb cut either towards the end of this week or the early part of next week. With regards to sightline requirements, is my understanding that we need to main have 155-foot sightline? And we've actually, I've actually placed the stake 155 feet down from the beginning of the, of the apron. And it is, you can clearly see it, the stake 155 feet away from the proposed right-of-way, the apron on the, on the right-of-way. That's all the detailed information that I have. If there are any comments that are raised, I would like the opportunity to address those. And with that said, does anybody have any questions?
So, Mr. Paul Antonio, I'm going to see if there are the other speakers here that which signed up, all right? Please, thank you. I am looking at the attendees, and I'm not seeing one phone call listener. Mr. Burt, do you have a number on that phone call listener? If we could find out if that's the other person?
The only one I have as a phone call listener is Anthony D'Joy.
Okay, I have that.
I don't see any number listed.
Okay, very good. All right, so then.
He's the, he's the one phone call, he is the one.
He's the, okay, thank you. So then, Madam Clerk, I don't have the other person that had contacted you about speaking this evening.
I don't either, unfortunately. I'm not at my office, so I don't have my call roster. So, I know, I know her feelings, and I think that the town manager has also had, and maybe even the director of OPDS may have conversations with, she's an adjacent property owner.
Correct, but she's not here to speak this evening, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So there is no one else signed up to speak. So I think public hearing is closed, and I don't see anyone else. Counselor Aubrey, did you wish to speak as part of the public hearing?
No, I just have a question afterwards, sorry.
Okay. All right, then we will close the second public hearing, and it is now 6:47. Thank you, Mr. Paul Antonio.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask him the question.
We can, we can have a quick question, but we can't get into any discussion right now because it's not on the agenda. Did you wish to ask a quick question?
I believe we have the right to ask a question for clarification.
Okay, so I closed the public hearing. We can reopen the public hearing if you want to ask him a question. So, okay. All right, go ahead, Counselor Aubrey.
Thank you. I have to apologize, I'm listening to you tonight without any of the exhibits. So my question is, the driveway that you have now, will that continue to be used? Or will that be abandoned?
Well, so when the property is sold off, that the current southern curb cut will be used by the property owner to access that, that parcel of land. We will use the northern curb cut as our access and to the property. And it is, that access point is, if you will, a secondary access. Our, the primary access currently being used by the property is on Main Street, but that's served by a private bridge, which in, in a storm, it can be lost, which it has been in the future, in the, in the past. And, and I, one more thing. There are currently two curb cuts serving 1206 River Road. They, they have been there since we purchased the property. So we're still maintaining two curb cuts to the property, not three.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing at 6:49. Thank you very much. Okay, give me one second. All right, we are on to Roman numeral five, receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. When you are recognized, clearly state your name and address and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town counselors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. And the details to register to speak were provided on the website. And we have two to speak under citizens petitions, and we have Kathy Chase, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kathy Chase, 146 Indian Field Road. And for full disclosure, I am also on the RTM representing, representing District One. I am reading the first half of a letter written by Melinda Cassieri. These are her words and opinions. She will continue the second half during her public comment. On September 23, I was granted the opportunity to sit down with several members of the Groton Town Police after an invitation from Counselor Franco. She, knowing my background as a former police officer, hoped I could bridge some gaps in communication of terms and ideas. The officers were incredibly candid and open about the current state of policing. They are frustrated and are very concerned about their careers, livelihoods, and the future of policing. When employees are confident, comfortable, and feel safe in their working environments, they are more likely to come to work every day confident in their duties and feel supported. The men and women of the Groton Town Police Department do not feel supported by this town government at this time. This is not a condemnation about the department's leadership as Chief Fusaro and Deputy Chief Gaitley stood proudly amongst their men and women. They pride their department on professionalism, patience, educational achievements, and the desire of the men and women of the Groton Town Police Department to come to work every day and protect and serve our community. Across our country, police departments, policies, state statutes or laws, and the prosecutorial systems all look different. That is the landscape of our justice, our state justice systems. They reflect the state's views on law and order. Connecticut is a very regulated state in regards to oversight over police officers. Connecticut state statutes already dictate the handling of civilian complaints. They had already contained language that would not support officers if they acted in a willful or wanton malicious manner when using force on a subject. And they already highly regulated police in the state. Because of this, every municipality's policies and procedures in their police departments must reflect the high standards of state law, leaving no room for cover-ups or lack of transparency. Civilian complaints have been subject to FOI standards for many years. The officers of the Groton Town Police Department have made it quite clear that they are not in favor of a police review or oversight board in any capacity. I strongly agree with them. Chief Fusaro has proven that this is a police department that has been nothing but transparent, willing to answer questions and willing to work with this council to address any questions or concerns about the conduct of its officers. The largest concern or desire requested from both the civilian oversight research committee and the public safety committee has been the need for more transparency. The chief has graciously provided both committees the entire compilation and results of every civilian complaint in his tenure, and is committed to placing civilian complaints and their findings on the town's website for more transparency, factoring, factoring in anonymity and protections for complainants, victims, and officers. This is a perfect example of transparency and understanding of the concerns of the community. The officers do not feel that they should have their job performances and civilian complaints determined by an untrained group of people. I strongly agree with them. Officers explain that for one policy alone, it could be up to 30 pages of content to apply. For example, if officers were dispatched to a domestic violence incident, their policy for domestic violence incidents alone could be 30 pages. If a use of force incident occurred during this event, this would add another 30 pages of content to know, understand, and know how to apply for one incident alone. This would mean that an untrained group of people would be required to know, understand, and apply potentially up to 1,000 pages of content. This doesn't factor in the months of police academy training, case law, hands-on training, and subsequent yearly elaborated training that officers receive throughout their career. And Melinda will finish the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Chase. Next, we have Melinda Cassieri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Melinda Cassieri, 280 Indigo Street, Mystic. In any other complicated profession that requires extensive training and on-the-job experience, a member of that occupation would be judged by a body of their peers. I would not know how to adequately review the work performance of a doctor, or anyone in the medical field for that matter, as I have not been to medical school or trained in a hospital or medical setting. I may be able to read a medical book and understand terms and procedures, but this does not mean I understand how to apply these measures in my everyday professional life. It is easy to judge a professional by a 30-second video if we have not truly experienced this moment for ourselves, nor if we have little to no understanding of policy, procedure, and law. There is a legal term called totality of circumstances that is used in case law. It is important to understand, but small segments of videos do not fully present the totality of circumstances of both officer or subject encountering law enforcement. If you cannot fully see, hear, smell, or observe the surroundings of these officers, then you do not fully understand the entire scenario. You will not truly understand the entirety of a situation until both accounts are fully examined and investigated by qualified individuals. Officers do not believe that any review board of any kind should have the ability to subpoena officers or evidence. Unqualified individuals could hear testimony, and they could look at documents or video, but with no full understanding of state statutes, policies, and procedures, and case law, then the ability to subpoena is of little use to them. For example, if a potential review board gets a complaint from an individual that feels they were unlawfully searched, the review board could view the body camera footage of the incident from officers. An untrained eye could watch a video and see officers patting the pockets of a subject and think that the complainant must be correct, they were unjustly searched. Case law determines that if officers have a reasonable suspicion that a subject may have a weapon, then they may conduct a pat-down of the outer clothing of a subject for their safety. This is much different than a search of an individual. This is just one example of many complex issues that a board of volunteers would be required to know, understand, and apply. The officers do not believe members of the council should have the right to create an ordinance affecting their job when most counselors have not done their own due diligence to understand the job or its complexities. Many counselors have not been on a recent ride-along or have not taken the steps to reach out to members of the police department to understand their concerns and fears. I would like to echo their concerns. I have heard many generalities and misinformed conversation thrown around during meetings. I respect any and all knowledge that we all bring to the table of our town government. I can strongly attest to the fact that unless you have done the job of a police officer, then you do not fully understand the responsibility and weight that it carries, despite what degree you may carry, or despite perhaps some relation to a police officer. The job is incredibly unique, even in the law enforcement community. This is also not written with any ill regard or disrespect. I think that a lot of the alarming topics I have heard discussed or nuanced have simply just been a product of a lack of understanding of law enforcement in general. In regards to the argument of a future potential problem with police brutality or distrust in a future post-Chief Fusaro town, I don't believe that an ordinance is necessary considering the integrity and dedication that this chief has shown to being transparent and community-oriented. There can be many other solutions to concerns rather than resorting to an ordinance. Even in a post-Chief Fusaro town, a group of volunteers with no training, no police service, and no legal background will ever be able to adequately and fairly judge the profession of highly trained and educated men and women. I agree that there are blatant issues of systemic racism in our country's criminal justice system that has been occurring since the beginning of our country's origins. I agree that there are issues of racism in our country's legal system today. But this burden should not fall on the shoulders of the men and women of our town's police department, who have clearly demonstrated nothing but professionalism and service to our community. I completely agree with transparency and accountability for anyone that violates abuse of power. However, the men and women in our town's police department have been granted authority over our state statutes and our town ordinances because of their qualifications and high standards, their years of training, and their experience. A body of volunteers who are granted power just because we can will not nearly be able to reach the same standards and qualifications of the men and women of the Groton Town Police Department. This letter is an abbreviated version of my original email. I ask that the council read it in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Cassieri. And that was received this afternoon in council email, and I ask that the clerk attach the entire letter to the minutes for this evening, please, Madam Clerk.
So, well, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you very much. That is all I have to speak under citizens petitions, unless Mr. Burt or the clerk have someone else here. And again, I don't see anyone new.
Those were the two that I had.
Okay, very good.
Same with me.
Same with you? Okay, very good. So that is it for citizens petitions. So we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. And this should be to clarify the speaker's presentation. Try not to jump the gun. Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, is this the opportunity to respond to citizens petitions?
Our current rules say that counselors will ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during responses to citizens petitions. So you may respond yes, because we've closed out citizens petitions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to clarify from Representative Cassieri. She stated the officers do not believe members of the council should have the right to create an ordinance affecting their job when most counselors have not done their own due diligence to understand the job or its complexities. Many counselors have not been on a ride-along, and many counselors have not taken the steps to reach out to members of the police department to understand their concerns and fears. And so, you know, I would just like to clarify with Representative Casieri what she meant by that, because that's a pretty bold assertion.
Sure. When I spoke with the officers, when I attended the meeting with Counselor Franco and Counselor Heed and Representative Chase, the officers expressed that they felt that many members of the council had not done their due diligence to speak with them or to address their feelings of their concerns with policing. That is the opinion of the officers.
Manager Burt?
Yes.
Just from, I can only speak for myself, but did I coordinate a time with you to meet with the police officers within the past two months?
Yes, and then I think that's when the storm hit. And then the joint committee has invited officers for tomorrow night to speak.
Okay, so I, again, just for the record, I have made every attempt to meet with the town police department. I was previously scheduled to meet with them, and inevitably a storm hit, and since then, I have not coordinated a time to meet with them, again, nor has the police department. But again, I have made every effort from the get-go to meet with them. So again, if there's any indication whatsoever that, or just the slightest idea that there are counselors out there avoiding meeting with the police department, that is anything but false. You know, so I can only speak from personal experience and know that I've made that attempt and would welcome the opportunity to do so. So I do not want any police officer to think that I would not at all entertain the idea of meeting with them to hear their concerns regarding, you know, our public safety's efforts to, you know, to enhance police accountability. And thank you, Representative Casieri, for your statement this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. We have Counselor Bordelain and then Franco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll align my marks with Counselor Baumgartner. I too was invited, well, the last invite I had, Counselor Franco did reach out to me and let me know that there was a time being set up, and unfortunately, due to job restraints, I sometimes am out at four, sometimes four-thirty, could be five. So it made it very tough, and I was not able to meet that time. The time before that, it was proposed to the council as a whole, and I do remember, I don't have the dates in front of me. As Counselor Baumgartner had stated, it was an open invite. Once again, understanding the needs and concerns of the officers, the times that were given were basically to facilitate the need for shift change, which is once again completely understandable, to be able to hit the most amount of officers in one given time. Once again, those times as a working household of two with two children and with homeschool obligations, one cannot meet at those shift-change times due to work obligations. Unfortunately, I'm not able to take a special day off, particularly for before this, and I was waiting at one of the meetings, actually, I had asked the town manager, would they bring any more dates coming forward? And I have not received any, with the exception of Counselor Franco so nicely did invite me, and I had to decline due to the time. So I do agree that that statement is kind of tough. I am open to other times. Unfortunately, I can't, I cannot meet those times and obligations. As far as meeting with police officers with a criminal justice background, I have done ride-alongs in other districts, worked in different offices in criminal justice field, worked, you know, volunteered in prison, doing my internships, as well as police and law enforcement's alike. As a child, I spent many years up at the Groton Police Department on field trips. I'm fully, I fully have been engulfed in the law enforcement background and field. I have not spent as much time at this current police station, and the offer has been extended, but I am still reaching out for other times. So I'm willing to come, and I would love the opportunity for different times to come. With that being said, with the state of COVID, and as we had our own, our town clerk's office closed, I do have concerns where I currently work in the medical field, and I'm already putting myself at high risk. I know officers are frontline workers as well as myself, and being exposed to multiple officers, if we're doing a Zoom meeting for our own town council meeting with a member of nine-body, it is a bit of a concern to have a revolving door of officers that I would be meeting with. I would prefer to meet one-on-one, so I'd be open to scheduling separate appointments to do such. What I look forward to hearing from the town manager, because I was told we are to go through him with some other dates and times. Once again, I do appreciate Representative Casieri with her remarks, and even though my, you know, I think that's appropriate, that's the comment part that I had in question. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelain. Counselor Franco.
I'd like to thank Melinda and Kathy for reading the interpretation of how that meeting had gone. I have a prepared statement that I'm going to read during Counselor comments, and but I do concur with Melinda and Kathy's reading of that, and it did convey a message that came across to me in the context that was read. And I will reserve time for when it's Counselor comments and read my statement. Thank you.
Are there any other responses to Citizens' Petitions? Counselor?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Obray and then Counselor Parker.
Okay. I just want to say that unfortunately, I wasn't invited to be part of the meeting that transpired. I would have been there. I have all along said that I have no problem with the Groton Police Department. I didn't think that what was being formed was necessary. We have a very forthcoming group of people. I think the chief does an excellent job. I think his relations, I've said this before, his relationship with the manager seems to be very good. If we have a question, we get an answer. I wish I was a little more eloquent of a speaker, because I'd like to be able to say in the right way, I think we're creating the problem. And I think it's best left to not happen. I listened to the meetings that they've had. There's obviously an agenda, which is unfortunately unfortunate. When your very first meeting, somebody makes a comment that the attorney isn't correct, it's not going to go anyplace for down from there. So I just want the police department to know that I think they're doing an excellent job. We do not have citizens coming in complaining. If the police officers are feeling badly, you know, I'm very sorry about that, but I think that, I don't know, I know everybody on this council, and I don't think anybody on this council has any lack of respect for the police, irregardless to their personal issues. And I know it's a very difficult job right now. No matter what you do, it probably isn't going to be right. So I just stand behind you for what it's worth, and I'm there to talk to anybody that would like to talk to me. And I would hope if there's another meeting in the future, I could be included, as I was not in the last one, and I'm very upset about it. Thank you.
I'm sure there were quorum issues in consideration of that, Counselor Obray. I'm not sure, though, but...
I don't really care. You're going to have a meeting. You make it a meeting for everybody. You do not go and just become... I don't even know what Rachel had in mind.
Okay, Counselor Obray, I'm going to ask you to...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Parker was next.
Okay. As I tried to keep my job where I work at, not quietly, but I tried to separate it from the town council, because I am the administrative assistant to the Chief of Police in Groton City. Do I understand police work? Been there thirteen years. I have some knowledge of it. I have a bachelor's degree in legal studies, so I've been studying it for a while. I'm a little... I'm concerned about what was said about meeting people and doing ride-alongs and everything. I currently work at a police department, so me leaving there to go to another police department to do a ride-along when I can do it somewhere else, it's... And then the times that were suggested to have a meeting with them, yes, it does not work in some aspect. Nor did I know about this last meeting, but it's neither here nor there. It's in the past, and hopefully, moving forward, we have some answers. If there's concerns, I thought we were going through the town manager, if there's concerns from the PD, so we do not contact Chief Fazaro about our concerns. I'm hoping... Let me, I have a question. Let me go back a minute. How many officers did you all meet with? Can anyone answer that? Counselor Franco, Counselor Heed, Representative Chase, Representative Casier? I apologize for pronouncing your name wrong.
I believe it was maybe fifteen to twenty.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Parker, are you finished with your comments? I'm going to assume that's a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So we've had... Looking to see if anybody else would like to be a first-time speaker, and then if not, we have Counselor Bordelain would like to speak again.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to make sure I leave proposing the question that was asked the last time. Town Manager John, can we set up some other times so that we could possibly meet? I do not feel comfortable meeting with fifteen officers at once. Is there another platform, possibly a Zoom meeting or something that we could set up? And I did at the other time when I couldn't make the original scheduled times that were presented, and then they were canceled. I did say, you know, I know, like, in this meeting, it's, a lot of people would like to point questions towards them beforehand, so that way you can do your due diligence and research. So I had asked also if any questions that were formulated, and when it's going to have to go through you, and none have come to me yet. Is there any questions from the officers or anything before meeting that one can review or, you know, anything that's been basically maybe put together, that would be helpful. But are there any other times that can be, you know, worked on?
So...
I can ask.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Burt, I wasn't sure.
Because I was still waiting to hear back about the rescheduled times, and I had not been reached, so I just wanted to make sure that we were still doing that, or is that, is that it?
I can ask them. However, I could tell you for tomorrow night, where officers were asked to, were invited to speak at the meeting, they have declined. I got to tell you, it's an emotional issue, and they don't trust everyone, and they're worried of getting in trouble. I could tell you that. So I can't force them to meet with anybody. You can ask to meet with them, but I leave that, that's up to the union and the officers.
Okay, so back to the original thing that was given in Representative Casieri's. Originally, the first invite was an open invite to counselors, especially that were part of the safety committee. And then it was canceled, and you said you would get back to us to reschedule. And I asked, could there be some questions? And I haven't, there's been nothing further. So now they, so I, once again, I'm going through you, because I have to go through you. I'm open to meet with them, but it has to be under different times. And is there a possibility of doing a Zoom meeting or another platform due to COVID, because I would not feel comfortable meeting with fifteen all in once on the inside of a building?
Yeah, I can ask, but I can't guarantee anything.
Okay, so I just wanted to clear the air that the attempts were made, and I was still waiting for a follow-up to meet, which was the original invite. Because I think it would be helpful, and if they can't meet, or they don't want to meet now, and like I said, I don't know all the workings and ins and outs to Counselor Franco's meeting, but I was invited, and I unfortunately could not attend that second attempt as it fell during the same timeframes that were originally presented. I am open to hearing their concerns or doing a Zoom meeting and, you know, looking at what's coming down from the state. No matter what comes out of any of this, there is certain things that are, you know, coming out in that avenue. And I just, I guess I'm just concerned that our police force feels that way, and that is a concern to me. Looking at other neighboring areas, yes, not everybody wants a civilian review board, but I guess I'm just concerned at this level that we're at such a heightened sensitivity and frustration already, and that is a concern, because as I had stated, I have no concern or outward, you know, motive towards this local police department, or do I, should they feel scared, threatened, or unsafe in that matter, or for that matter, not supported. So I just wanted to reemphasize that again, and understand that when looking at what the state has already passed and what they're, you know, pushing down, and where we as a town, once again, that has nothing to do with any direct thoughts or process on anyone directly in this town. I don't think that's the motivation of how it was recreated, and I just want to make sure that is also passed on to them. So I guess I just hope that that's the feeling that's going forward. And I appreciate any correspondence or opportunities to outreach and be a part of any discussions or deliberations that fit around a working folks' schedule after the hours of four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bordelain. I'm not seeing any other hands to speak under Response to Citizens. Counselor Obray, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I don't have a thing on my screen to put my hand up. So I just wondered if either Manager Burt or yourself were at the meeting.
I was not. I was underwear.
I was not at the meeting either. And just to make it clear, it's not a... I don't want to speak on behalf of officers, but Rachel asked to have a meeting, which any council member can ask, and I can relay to the department. If you want a meeting, that's fine. She asked if she could meet with him. The police agreed to meet with her, and then asked if she could invite a couple of people, which they agreed to. Since then, they've... I don't want to put words in their mouths, but my take, I'm going to be blunt here. My take is, I watched all the meetings, including all the committees, and some of them have relayed that they have a feeling there's a predetermined end result, and that's, I think, the biggest frustration from what I've heard, but I don't want to speak for them. I can't, it's a very delicate issue. I'm not going to get into it further here. This conversation is done by, any council member can request a meeting. It's perfectly, you know, you have to go through me, but the police can determine whether they want to meet or not.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. So if any other counselors wish to initiate a meeting, we should email you, and then you could reach to Chief and see if any of his officers or the chief himself are available to have a meeting and discuss things, correct?
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, Representatives Casieri and Chase for your letter and for your work. And we always appreciate the communication from you. All right, we are on to Roman numeral seven, Consent Calendar. Counselor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar, please, sir? This begins on page seven in your packet. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I lost track of the screen.
That's all right.
Yes, I will make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of the September 1st, 2020 meeting minutes, the 2020-619 various appointments and reappointments for August and September, 2020-647 special trust on contributions in September, 2020-618 miscellaneous ad hoc appointment, Eastern CT Tourism District. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Bordelain.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelain. Is there any discussion on the minutes, which again, started on page seven? And Counselor Zepari is not... And Counselor Zepary is not here to read the trust fund contributions. So would anyone like to read those in his stead? And I can give you the page for those. This is on page seventeen, I believe. Let me get there real quick.
If I can get there, I'd be happy to.
Yes, page seventeen. I think this is the right one.
Okay. Do you like to read them?
Yes, you don't have to give the amounts. If you just want to list the names, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thomas McLaughlin, two twenty-five Cedar Road.
Wait, 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 hold on.
Appointments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, those are the appointments. If you could read the contributions on the next page.
Got it now, I think. Okay, Joan Feeny for Social Services, Heather Gibson, Social Services, Leo and Catherine Gibson, Social Services, Terry and Laurie Coffer, Social Services, John and Robert Silsby, Social Services, Lee Vincent, Social Services, Tamin Branish. I apologize if I'm not saying that Greek correctly, Social Services. And City of Groton, Groton Utilities Energy Assistance Program.
And would you like to carry on on the next page with the Groton Food Locker contributions, Counselor Obray?
Sure. Barbara Pantalone, Walter Grant, St. Lutheran Church, Catherine Rathburn, Stanley White, William and Martha Newell, and Marsha, oh boy.
I would say Shalorus, Shalorus.
My apologies. We're not sure how to say that.
I think that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to note here, Counselor Melendez is not with us this evening. There are various appointments that were made. And I wanted to just note the one appointment is to the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District. And Counselor Heed has graciously agreed to fill the large but delicate shoes of former Mayor Schmidt. So Counselor Heed will be representing the Town of Groton on the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District Board, once we vote on this this evening. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on acceptance of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Excellent. All right, we are on to communications and reports. And we, this is other than committee reports, please. So we will start with Town Council. This is Roman numeral eight A. And we are on to, tried to write them in order as the dais. Counselor Baumgartner will begin, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This past weekend, I participated in a cleanup of Sutton Park. It was attended by several community members, several kids as well. And we probably picked up at least nine, you know, half full bags of trash from Sutton Park, which was great. You know, getting behind the trees and behind the skate park and it's really a beautiful park. You know, this council this year and in years past and in the future, I've talked about upgrades to the park in the long term and, you know, identifying for future reuses of the park and, you know, it's really nice to see the town paying attention to it and understanding the importance of the park to not just the surrounding community, Quonix Bridge, but also, you know, certainly its proximity to the high schools. You know, it serves as a nice congregating grounds for teenagers to, you know, safely skate and play basketball and, you know, play pickup baseball over at, you know, the softball field or the little league field. So long short of it, Great Park, the recently, the Town Parkson Rec Department got a grant to plant three hundred native shrubs and trees, which is really amazing. And so, you know, looking forward to supporting, you know, more investments in the park and so that it's more heavily utilized by our sports teams as well. And thank you again to Parkson Rec for putting together not just the cleanup, but also their success in landing that grant. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to note that it is seven twenty-seven. Counselor Parker had to leave the meeting at seven twenty-six. So we are at six counselors at this point. And we will go on to Counselor Franco.
Thank you. So I prepared something to read. I would like to share information I've heard regarding the Town Council taking up the topic of forming a citizens oversight committee for the Town of Groton Police Department. After most of us were elected the first time in 2017, Police Chief Fazaro offered all counselors the opportunity to go on a ride along with the police officers to understand what they do in our community. Then after the November 2019 election, the council was offered the same opportunity. On August 4th, 2020, an invitation was sent to the council stating, hello, Chief Fazaro met with many of our officers last Friday, discussed concerns they have. The officers have asked for council members to come meet with them to discuss those concerns. They are especially interested in meeting with the members of the Public Safety Committee. Council members could go individually or in small groups of two or three. The best times to meet with them are generally, are generally as shift changes at eight AM and four PM and at noon during lunch. Please let me know if you are willing to meet and I will work with you to arrange. We all received this invitation on August 4th. I took up the offer and had the pleasure to ride along with Sergeant McCarthy. I also arranged two meetings with police, one in early August, which was postponed due to weather. Though I went and spoke with a few officers, and one on September 23rd, for which I invited Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Heed, RTM members Kathy Chase and Melinda Cassieri. Counselor Bordelon was unable to attend. We met with approximately twenty police officers. Officers along with Chief Fazaro and Deputy Chief Gailey. These meetings went through the Town Manager John Bird, which I got his approval and with his approval scheduled. At the meeting on September 23rd, I learned from our Town of Groton Police Officers that they do not feel supported by Groton Government. They have extended an invitation to this council and this council has not responded. Though this council has set up a safety committee to establish a police oversight committee without discussing any of these issues with the police officers themselves. They have watched and listened to the safety committee as well as the RTM Cork, as I have, and are dismayed by what they are hearing. They feel as though this is an attack on their profession and themselves. They hear committee members discussing topics and by listening, it is apparent they do not understand the topics. Committee members are looking to implement regulations they do, they know nothing about and have not done their homework or talked to those who it would affect the most. They feel they are, there are personal agendas at work on these committees and they are not investigating the matter without bias. Committee members are comparing the Town of Groton Police Department to other communities. Some communities that have mandated oversight boards due to corruption or large cities who have issues that do not happen in Groton. When I have heard of issues that have happened locally with police and I drill down, I have found it is not under the jurisdiction of the Town of Groton Police Department. The Town of Groton Police Department does not want to answer for other surrounding local police departments. They want to be accountable to their, for their own Town of Groton Police Department. Also, Connecticut is one of the highest regulated states in the country. You cannot compare other towns and cities and other states to Groton, Connecticut. Our police officers are fully aware and saddened by the awful deaths of citizens under police force. But that is not happening here in Groton, Connecticut. One officer said he saw a lack of proper police training in the videos. Our police force should not be compared to them. Our police force is trained and extremely professional and care about our.
Excuse me.
I have heard these praises from many people who interact with them regularly, including the ambulance and the fire department. I also learned that many officers are looking at their retirement options. After the State of Connecticut Police Act was passed, many of our Groton Police Officers are looking at their own retirement options. And some are moving forward earlier than they thought they would or looking at changing careers. This worries me. And it should worry all of you. Groton's Police Chief is as transparent as he can be. He attends meetings and shares a breadth of knowledge and information that holds and, and holds an open door policy. In the Joint Safety and Cork Committee meetings, he has offered to put investigations out on the, for public view with modifications for personal protections on our website. So if for any reason a future police officer is not trans, I mean, a police chief is not transparent, he will answer to the Town Manager. And if that is not good enough, the Town Manager answers to the Town Council. And ultimately, we are the oversight. Though the main question asked by officers and has resonated with me since that meeting is, what have we done wrong to warrant this? They asked, who in the community is calling for an oversight board? Who is calling you and sending you emails with complaints? What are the complaints? Tell us what we have done wrong so we could work to fix it. My answer to them was, I am not receiving complaints, nor calls or emails calling for an oversight committee. I don't think you did anything wrong and you don't deserve this. Though I have heard from police officers, people in our community, as well as other elected officials, and I will tell you this. The people I heard from do not like what they are hearing at the Cork or the Safety Committee meetings, nor the approach being taken. I was asked, who has oversight of these committee members and the statements that they, they are making? The Safety Committee was set up without establishing overall goals and directives as I had repeatedly questioned. The council sent the topic of setting up a citizens review committee to the Safety Committee without the caution to also review if an oversight committee is even needed. I implore the Safety Committee to take a step back and ask yourselves some basic questions. What are we fixing? Do we need this? And are there other options? In closing, I believe so many are upset at issues that are in the national spotlight, which is rightfully so. Though it is unfair to apply that anger to the Town of Groton Police Officers. I have not read or heard of civil liberty violations in the Town of Groton. I think this is unfair to the men and women who serve our community. They have not warranted the disdain they are receiving from the citizens as well as the lack of support or concern from our council. The brave men and women who served the Town of Groton Police Department were forthright and laid out their concerns with me and I thank them and I support them. Thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things to report. I attended the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting with counselors Melendez and Zepary. And the work that we did is before us tonight. And then the second thing is just, just quickly, I attended the police, the meeting with the police officers. I was invited by Counselor Franco and I appreciate her making the effort to make that happen. I guess kind of on a, on a side note, I just want to say that we've been invited to these things before and when questions or alternative dates are suggested, we get no response. And I believe that we're handling that through Mr. Bird, so I just want to throw that out there. So thank you, Rachel, for making this happen. And then it was kind of a little bit eye opening to finally get a chance to sit down with the police and hear what they had to say. And obviously, you know, we're all watching TV and we're seeing what's happening in these other towns and other communities. And clearly, there's a lot wrong in this country. And whether or not it's actually wrong here in Groton, Connecticut is, you know, I guess that's the question that we really need to consider. So without going any further, I'll just say, you know, I really appreciated the opportunity to meet with the officers and hear their concerns.
Counselor Bordelon.
I, I think Counselor Obray is before me. If, I just want to make sure I'm not out of turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sure she's fine. Are you okay with that, Counselor Obray? Go ahead, Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say that I, this is where I'm talking about, this is, this is our comments, right, what we've done.
These are your communications?
Oh, perfect. So hello, everyone. Yes, I attended a fields meeting this week and sports fields, athletic fields, and some designs have been presented and ideas of making use of what is on the property and rearranging as well as looking at other places like Sutton Park possibly and other things. I encourage you to tune in. And I have also also wanted to say, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I have my pin here and as a breast cancer survivor, I encourage everyone to stay aware of your health and I wanted to personally thank Officer McCullen, met her. So I just, and I'll just say, with all due respect, me and Counselor Franco, we can agree to disagree and it doesn't change how I feel about her. So I just want to say that the, what I'm ringing in my head, the lack of concern or support. When I first got appointed to this council, the ride along originally happened and I guess I have not had a chance to go. But I can remember very clearly when I was first appointed, attending several awards and ceremonies, actually with you, Counselor Franco, and being thanked by Chief Fazaro as we were the two counselors sitting there. And we both raced there from our jobs at four o'clock, which I no longer have and I never, no longer have that same job and I'm no longer working. I no longer have Fridays off. But I do remember us racing to an award ceremony at the Town Annex together, supporting and being there as people were pinned telling their stories. I also do remember attending the Elks Club. And once again, these are not obligations of the council. This was at will. Attending the around regions, different officers being recognized and that was an honor to be at that. So the lack of concern or support, I, I am a person who has attended and has been involved. And I just wanted to say that Officer McCullen sent me a card in the mail with McDonald on here and it states, Dear Portia, we met last year at the officers, Coffee with the Officers, Coffee with the Cop, which is another event I attended. And I believe you were towards the end of your own treatment. I wanted, I wanted you to have one of these pink patches we designed in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Wishing you continued health and wellness, which she was correct. I was at the tail end this time when I had met her and she did send me one of these. So no matter what side or, there's no side here and that's why I'm having trouble with the, the perception or feel. Sometimes change is not always welcomed, but the intention is not what is being presented or what I heard here tonight. So I, I just, it bothers me to hear that. So the lack of concern or support and, you know, saying that no attempt has been made to go, but that was my communication. I thought it was very generous and thankful and it's signed by her herself. And she remembers the exact day we spoke at the, the night, the day out. So in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I thank you, Officer McCullen for this awesome badge that shows the pink, also has the pink ribbons. And once again, I encourage everybody in our community to, you know, take this month and be aware of, you know, making sure you're getting your screenings. Other communications. I know we also did receive an email from Kim. I know she's corresponded in the past and there were some things where she had from a constituent seeming upset about, you know, the concern for the oversight and the safety committee. And she stated that her husband also is a state trooper. Once again, I, I'm sorry that you feel this way and I send my sincere appreciation as I have been out and I do support and I will continue to support and I have supported, you know, even the financial budget for the police officers and believing that we need proper equipment to serve and do our job. So once again, I, I'm, I find it hurtful that people are saying that the questions or the way that people are looking at that, that's how they're taking it. And that's all I have for communications. Thank you.
Counselor Obray, you're up. Sorry for getting it out of order.
And Counselor Obray is muted.
You're muted, Counselor Obray.
There we go. Okay, I thought it was better to do that for a while and behave myself. Okay. The Beautification Committee, I'd like to thank Nancy Cardani, Bruce McDermott, Cindy Fortner and Andrew Perella for a wonderful, wonderful job. We were selling bulbs last Saturday at the Senior Center. We sold all our bulbs and we have a little bit more money for beautification. Tying in with that, I also went to a meeting where the design and placement of signs were shown from the, the group that's assisting the town in the, in the design and the selection. So what I'm asking tonight is I hope that perhaps, since everything seems to be pretty much in place with the signs, that we maybe could move forward. We're quite anxious to do something with the intersection of 117 and Route One, one of our initial projects. one of our initial projects. And also, we were approached by a group that are very anxious to do something by the Avery Memorial. The Avery Memorial has been restored, and we think it would be appropriate for the town property next to it to look a whole lot better in the spring than it does right now. And I think that's about all that I can think of right now that I've done. That actually took, I tell you, that group was great, they just did a phenomenal job. But also, I wanted to mention, I didn't receive the packet on the short-term rentals, and I was kind of anxious to see what we were doing in reference to that. So if you, if that could happen. And as you know, our changes to the rules will be coming forth. And I just want to ask everybody, as they read them, to really try to think about what it is we're trying to do. I've had a very diligent group working with me. Counselor, I wish they put your whole name up, because I never say Bumgadner correctly. And also, help me, who else is on the committee with me?
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, thank you. We did put a lot of time into it, and a lot of anguish trying to be appropriate in what we were trying to accomplish. So when you do get the packet, I hope everybody will take the time to read it, really think about it. Counselor Heed had done an excellent job before, there wasn't an awful lot that needed to be changed or in any way, because I could see the hard work that they'd put into it the previous year. But we did make some changes that I think could make our meetings a little bit more interesting, and maybe, maybe get a little more lighthearted in our spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will note that Counselors Zepery arrived at approximately 7:40. And Counselors Zepery, thank you for joining us, we are at the point of communications on the agenda, and it would be your turn naturally, so did you have anything you wish to communicate, sir?
I'll report.
Thank you. I have a couple of things to report. I had a phone call from a teacher at, within the Groton Schools, at Groton Middle School, and the teacher wanted me to make sure that the council heard the concerns that were brought to me. There are concerns, as you know, because of the situation with COVID and some positive tests at the building. The concern is with the ability to do proper contact tracing. The concern is with remaining open after the short-term closure happens. And the concern is also that the council be kept apprised of all of the events that are happening in Groton Schools as far as COVID goes. I spoke with Chairman Watson, and Chairman Watson respectfully asks that any questions or concerns go directly to the superintendent. There was a concern also that the hybrid model is not working very well, that was raised by the teacher who contacted me. And Chairman Watson acknowledged that the hybrid is not perfect, and in her words, it is not the gold standard. The board is very aware of this. The chairperson also noted that there are some things that are not working, and they've been identified, and the board is trying the best they can to resolve them. And Chairman Watson thanks everyone for their patience in this very trying time, and would really like to see the lines of communication kept open. So if there are other concerns, certainly feel free to raise them here with council, but council's job is not the education, right? We work as partners with the Board of Ed. We certainly hear your concerns, but we want to encourage you to go directly to the board and use the channels there to communicate those concerns. Okay, so I will end that, that was my report from the teacher who contacted me, and I will just say briefly, as a teacher, I understand the concerns very much, and I think that may be why the person felt comfortable talking to me about it, because I am in the same situation, and I understand the fear of being able to protect our kids and being able to contact trace, and the worry that you have. So it certainly, certainly is a concern, and the board is listening, and the chairperson is listening, and she wants you to feel free to reach to her and the other board members to further express your concerns. Okay. I can't do the Gary Wells report, but I will do a golf advisory board report. We met on the 5th last evening, and trees, the trees that were removed at the direction of the arborists because of the complaints from neighbors have been replaced. So 10 trees in all, along the 11th hole, the 11th green, red maples and hornbeams, and Public Works will be going out to finish up with the stump grinding after their paving work is finished. There was a request raised by the member, a member of the golf advisory board, that when council considers our budget in the spring, that we look into doing something more than a porta potty on the 8th hole. They would like us to look at the CIP. There has also been talk with Legislite Health District about larva dunks, I think, I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but the little things you drop in the standing water that kills the larvae of the mosquitoes. I guess there are some problems in a certain areas there where there are wetlands. Women's and men's club did a great job, we have a lot of new members, youth members, and it is up a lot higher than it has been in any year since the Tiger Bounce, they said. So when Tiger Woods came into play, there was a lot of youth memberships sold, and we're seeing that same kind of bounce again. They're very pleased with the strides they made in the Associate and Associate Plus. And the idea with the youth members and the Associate members is to grow the golf course base, because golf is a lifetime sport, and they're hoping those people will stay with us. Jessica Patterson from Parks and Rec joined the meeting last night to present a marketing report, and they are doing some innovative things with marketing for the golf course, and you should be watching out for some videos. Mr. Greeley, our own videographer, and his assistant, and Ms. Patterson did some drone footage and some other video footage, and they will be producing those and distributing them for social media and on, I believe, the YouTube channel. Next meeting is November 2nd.
Okay, I think that's it. We are on to Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM met on September 9th, they approved a revision to their rules to include student liaison. Now, they had passed a rule previously, and this was amending that particular rule. You should have received a copy of the draft, I'm not sure if you have it or not, but I'll make sure you do. Also, at that meeting, vacancy in the 3rd district. Jason Rusk was filling the vacancy for the 3rd district, and also, I need to report that there is another vacancy in the 1st district, which caused a vacancy in the Finance Committee, but the moderator appointed Kathy Chase to fill that vacancy, that's Wilmer Lampard moved out of town, unfortunately, lost a good member, but New London Gaines is a good guy, so that's, that's one issue. So they'll be meeting, the next meeting is October 14th. They, they have some things on the menu, on the menu, I should say, not the menu, the agenda. So I think that everyone should tune in to GMTV on October 14th. Hopefully, we'll have a good meeting, I'm sure we'll have a lot of reports. And that's, that's about it for the RTM. And then, do you want me to go on to council?
Yes, please.
Okay, I have to report to you of the doings of the town clerk's office. So the town clerk's office, as you may have known, there was an exposure to COVID, potential exposure, I should say. And that's all cleared, and, but we are inundated with a very heavy turnout in absentee voting. So as of today, out of the 20,365 active voters that we have in town, 5,499 voters have received ballots. So that means they've applied for ballots, and well, they've been mailed out, let's put it that way. So the routine goes that the Secretary of the State sent applications to every registered voter in the state. That was over 2 million applications. Now, there are some people that did not receive them for various reasons. Either they moved from their last voting address and didn't notify the Registration Office, or they're newly registered to vote, so they didn't receive one. To receive a ballot application, you can either download one from the Secretary of the State's website or town clerk's website, or you can call us and we'll mail you one. Or, better yet, you can come into the office after 1:30 in the afternoon and, and do it in person. So you can apply and receive ballots now, those have been available since October 2nd. And, but I, what I really want to explain to you is the effort that not just my department, but volunteers and the town manager, the assistant town manager, staff from, from, from Human Services, staff from the Tax Office. I might be missing somebody, but boy, we had, we had so many people coming in and, you know, get the effort to get all these ballots out by October 2nd. And you wonder what the delay was, well, the delay was that we didn't have the equipment to mail out applications or ballots until, until a week before. No, it wasn't, it was a Thursday before we got our ballots. So, so, so we, we had a very short amount of time to process all of those applications. That was a little over 5,000, it was actually 5,199 on that day. So kudos to the town manager and the town, and assistant town manager and all the staff that helped, and all the volunteers, and I appreciate it, and the town's a better, a better place because of them. Any questions?
Clerk, I appreciate you acknowledging the work that everyone did pull together to get those things done. That's excellent. I'm sorry, did you have more to say?
No, I just wondered if you had any questions.
Are there questions for the clerk? Okay, you'll be around for the rest of the meeting, right? Madam Clerk?
Oh yes, I'm here.
Okay, you'll be here if they come up with something later that they wish to ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelone, is the question for Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I was using electronic hand, I'm not sure if you could see it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I had a question, a couple of questions that were raised to me. If, if they received their ballot, and they did that just because they don't know if, like, the COVID cases are going to be high, but they would prefer to vote in person, the traditional way, what are their options on the day of? Do they have to bring in their requested ballot and turn it in, or use that and turn it into the machine that day? Could you just give a little description of what, how that may work?
Sure, sure. Anyone can request and receive an absentee ballot, it doesn't mean that you have to use it. So the only reason you'd be using that ballot is because you're not available to vote in person. And normally, that is because you're ill or away from, from, from the town during the voting hours, or you're working at the election. So, but this year, the legislature has agreed to include the threat of COVID, of contracting COVID at polling places as an excuse for all registered voters to vote. So, you know, your question specifically has been asked in this, in my department, over and over again. If you get your ballot and you decide, hey, I want to go in person, just throw that ballot away, tear it up into tiny little pieces, we do not want to see it. If you send it in to me, it will be registered with the Central Voting Registration System, so the world will know you voted absentee. And the registrar of voters will also notate, they note the master list for voters for Election Day, that also will be listed that you voted by absentee. So if you tried to go in in person, you'd be stopped at the door. Okay? So if you want to vote by absentee, vote by absentee early, I suggest. I, I understand that the Secretary of the State has cautioned voters to get their ballots in before, a week before the election. That's, that's an interesting thing, because that's not what the law states, so you can get your ballot in the day before election. Actually, I can receive it up to 8:00 PM on Election Day, so, but don't go in person if you're going to vote by absentee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we go to Mr. Bird, I just, I forgot to mention one thing. On Saturday, I attended a meeting that the Department of Public Health held. It was a teleconference, and it was for municipal leaders and superintendents, and it was just updates from the Department of Public Health, and our commissioners were present, and they were providing updates for local health departments, for superintendents, our Chief Fisaro was present, and other local municipal leaders were there as well, and they just gave us direction as to all the resources that are available for the municipalities out there to access, so I just wanted to make sure I shared that with you as well. Mr. Manager, you're up, sir.
Good evening, first, I wanted to single out Bob Zagami's, he really orchestrated, organized the help in the clerk's office. All I did was I spent six or seven hours stuffing ballots, that was my, my contribution. So, which was good to do, it's amazing how many ballots were going through that office. Danielle Cheeseborough, the first select woman in Stonington, she has confirmed she will be attending our next meeting to discuss the bridge, and I believe she's bringing, I forget the name, but the Chair of the Finance Board will be attending also. A reminder to everyone, the plastics ban ordinance did go into effect yesterday, October 5th, after that delay earlier, so that is in effect now. And the Planning Department did send out information and publicized the start of it. Public Works should be finished with paving projects in Mystic in the next week or so. Then they've got some other things like paving the Groton ambulance parking lot, doing the Tinglewood basketball court, that type of thing. A Groton Long Point Bridge, first meeting is tentatively planned for October 22nd at 6:30, but it's yet to be verified, notices will go out. The Nautilus Dock Project bid has been delayed, pushed out just a little bit, October 22nd, because there were some questions specifically for the Navy, and the Navy takes a couple of weeks before they can answer them. So we had to push it out a couple of weeks, but we've had a lot of interest in it though, so we're hopeful on that project. Wanted to mention, Chief Fisaro last week was recognized by the Police Commissioners Association of Connecticut at an annual dinner last week, with, recognized with the distinguished Chief's Award, so that was good. That was last week, I went down to Fairfield for that event. We did wear masks and distance. And I just want to mention, or put one thing on the council's radar, and maybe anyone else out there who's listening, Tinglewood Park, we received an email, I received an email, and so did Mark Berry from a couple of people living in that neighborhood. Up to about 13 years ago, there was a boat launch there. Up to about 13 years ago, there was a boat launch there that people could just put like kayaks, that type of thing in. There was a neighbor that moved in and apparently there were some complaints. And at that same time, back around 2007-ish, the Esker Point Beach launch was done. So they shut down the Tanglewood launch. Mark and I went out and looked at it today. And we think it could do small boats. You, you could maybe pull in down there in the road, drop off and then pull back up to the lot. I've asked him to get the, the, and it was the town manager, by the way, that made that decision back then. It wasn't a council decision. But I've asked Mark to bring it to the Parks and Rec Commission because I'm interested in opening it for the public. But I want to get some input and have plenty of time to, for people to weigh in on it. But I, I would like to get that open for the public. I just want to put that in your radar that you'll probably be hearing about that soon. That's all I have.
Okay, we are under your report, Mr. Bird. We have the open agenda item review. Is there anything you wanted to add? I have, I wish to ask a question, but I wasn't sure if you wanted to add anything before I go back to council.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Counselor Bordelone, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Town Manager, for the update. That's, I actually remember that little boat, kayak launch over there.
Still in good condition there. I mean, there's not a structure there, but it's nice. It, you know, it's still very accessible.
It's a great access point, so I'm interested to see where that goes. I always wondered what happened to it, so. I just had one quick question. Is there any COVID update? Just in reference to, you know, the governor going to phase three, where we're at currently as a town? And any efforts that we're making or concerns that we're foreseeing currently that, you know, that we need to prepare for or anything that we really need to keep on our radar of COVID related? Thank you.
Right. Um, yeah, the governor yesterday reiterated the plan, the intent to go. I think it's Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, to go to phase three, which is 75% I think allowable capacity at restaurants, that type of thing. Also increases like for the library, I think can go up higher capacity. The communities, the senior center, as planned, when they got to phase three, they're going to do some limited spaced, allow, allow you to come in for 50 minutes to the exercise room. Very spaced out and then nobody will be coming in and out of the building at the same time. It'll be, everything will be cleaned down by staff in between, that type of thing. There's actually quite a thorough plan that they've put together for that. But so far, you know, outside of the clerk's office and the registrar's office, we've been doing pretty well. I mean, the town, obviously, all throughout Connecticut, we're going up. But in terms of the town proper, we're doing pretty well. We have, I think we've got really good, you know, safety precautions in place at our facilities. So, so far, so good. But if we tick up a lot more, you know, we'll have to see. I'd rather seen the state maybe hold off a little bit on that phase three, but hopefully it'll go well.
My last question to that, another question. Will there be any temperature checks at the senior center or library or any of those establishments?
Library isn't doing it now. And they haven't been actually too full lately, surprisingly. I, I can't remember. It's a multi-page document for the senior center. I don't, I can't say, I can't say for sure either way. I'll look into it and email you.
Okay.
I might have it in an email somewhere, so while, while the meeting goes on, I'll look and tell people if I find it.
And if it isn't, is it, if, if there is no temperature check for the senior center, is there a way that we, how do we go about making that part of that?
I would just ask Mark to do it.
Okay, just to try to, you know, catch any?
No, no, it's a good point. I'll, I agree. I agree that temperature check should be done.
Okay, because it's just a vulnerable population and I just think that it would be a great, just a recommend or thought anyway, obviously.
If it's not in there, I'll make sure it's added. Is that satisfactory to everyone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, not everyone, but I'm just, I just think it would be a great, it, just let me, you'll let us know if it's not in there and if you're adding it.
Yeah, well, if it's not in there, I'm guaranteeing you I'm adding it. I won't tell you if I don't tomorrow, but I'm, I mean, if for some reason it can't be done, but I'm sure it can be done. So we, we will make sure it's in there.
And also, and if it is, is the will of the council obviously as well, just to, you know, that we are posting, one of the things I had seen as things are starting to reopen, that we, you know, once again, just recommend that if you're not feeling well, that they don't attend these events and that there will be temperature screenings, maybe adding that to our, our, you know, our pages or our announcements on either the senior center or rec or, you know, just to kind of, you know, emphasize the, you know, the, the checking and checks and balances for the reopening of that. Especially since we're on a, things are starting to spike again a little bit. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to note, we are back to eight counselors. Counselor Zupery is with us and Counselor Barker had, Counselor Parker, excuse me, Counselor Parker has returned. Counselor Parker is back. Did I see Counselor Overy's hand?
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm a little disappointed in Counselor Bordelone. You didn't mention the fact that the, there was an issue with the, the restrooms at the park in Grotton. I'm looking at you to keep an eye on.
Oh, you want me to do that too? I was, I'm trying not to talk too much there, Counselor Overy.
I think it's good you bring it up.
All right, very good. So.
You know what the problem is, ma'am? There actually is a problem at the restroom down at Sutton, Sutton Park?
Aquatic Plains, I believe.
Plains, yes. So, Manager Britt, maybe you could follow up on that? Because I know Counselor Bordelone will be keeping an eye on it.
What's the complaint though? You didn't say the complaint.
Oh, that it's not being, it's not being cleaned and it, it has no products in it.
It's been cleaned, it's getting cleaned twice a day. And products are put in at those times, but we'll double check to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. They, they do have revolving staff there at times. I'll check on it.
Thank you very much.
May I just add something? Mayor Granowski?
Yes, and then Counselor Franco has her hand up too.
Counselor Franco, do you want me to add it after? I don't want to cut you off. Town Manager Burke, maybe it might be the same issue. I know with COVID, it seems people are washing their hands more than ever. It's amazing that we're running out of soap the way we did. It makes you wonder a little bit. Maybe we might need an extra dispense, you know, dispenser down there like we did down in Mystic, just because of the, I don't, I'm not sure if that's even.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco.
Thank you. So, um, back in the summer, I had requested the Board of Ed Superintendent come to our meeting and give us an update on the school opening and what their plans were. And this never happened. And I, I had, I really wanted to make sure that we knew so that when people in the community ask us questions, we could at least say, you know what, they came and they spoke to us and this is what they told us and they're working on it. Literally right now, when people in the community come to me, I have nothing to say because they've never come to us to tell us anything at all. So I really don't know what's going on and I'm sure I could go and log into all their meetings. But it would be nice if they could come and just give an overall presentation that maybe the community can hear as well as all of us at our council meetings. And also, I mean, because actually in, in reality, I don't think Dr. Grineer had been here for a very long time or, and, and I'm, so I'm just curious as to why, is there, is he just really busy and he can't come see us or is there a reason?
Yeah, I, I did invite them, but there's, they've been so incredibly busy. Plus, you know, they're trying to find Mike's replace, Dr. Grineer's replacement because he's supposed to be done, I think he's extended it. I don't know the details, but he was supposed to be done in the 16th.
All right, so this is just.
I will, I will reach out to them again tomorrow though.
Right, it's just a lot of information. We don't know what's going on.
Basically, I would ask them if they'd be willing to come and give an account, an update on how the reopening, the opening of schools has gone and maybe a quick overview of their safety precautions and procedures. I will relay that to them again tomorrow.
And also, can you give me an update on how COVID is going with the Department of Human Services? And how their needs are and the community needs?
Sure. And I, I did send the council report that shows what the, what the balances are in their various funds in human services. They're, they're doing well. You know, there's a couple of their accounts that are low, but they have a bigger generic account that can be moved into different accounts. It's just now, as we've gotten into October, that's when the moratorium on utility bills and evictions goes on. So the Human Services has done a push to try to get more donations. Not that, they're doing well right now with, just in case, they want to be able to handle, you know, everything that comes their way. So if you go on our website to the Human Services Department, anybody, you'll see a button where you can click on that and donate money to Human Services. It goes for things like help with rent, help with utilities, a variety of things. Food, obviously, we have a very healthy, it's one thing people think of in this time. People have been, you know, very good about donating money for the, for the food bank. That comes right initially to your mind, but I want to make sure we're setting well for rent and utilities.
Appreciate that. And so if our numbers go up, have you heard of anything of just, I mean, even statewide of any kind of shutdown? Or do you think that's not something that they're going to whatever do in the future? Just from anything that you've heard in your meetings with the state?
Not hearing anything like that at this point. I think numbers have to go up quite a bit more.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Scary for us in Eastern Connecticut because we're the part of the state now that's going up. The other parts of the state are, are doing better and now it's hitting us and we're, we're doing worse now. So it is, it is a little disconcerting. Okay, so we are on to.
I just had my hand up electronically. I just said to ask one quick clarifying question real quick.
Certainly. I wasn't sure if that was left over from the last time. Go ahead.
I'm monitoring it. I just wanted to ask you, to Counselor Franco's point, if they're not able to attend, even, I'm not, I mean, I guess some type of letter submitted from them just that we could have to just give an update, I think would be even a starting point to, you know, have some information if they wanted to submit something like where they're at. Like I know people are having questions like, and maybe you can answer this, John, Tom and Joe Burke. You know, the, the gym, is that complete yet? And, you know, are we at a completion point yet on those extra jobs that were still pending at the middle school?
I can't say for the gym for sure, but I was told that everything should be in place by the end of this month.
By the end of the month, okay. Yeah, even if you do the correspondence, I think if they can attend some, even if it's once a month, just having something from them to update us. You know, questions, other things that have come my way like have the other tablets come in yet for the elementary schools so that all the students are one-to-one? And I, I, like, as Counselor Franco stated, I can't answer those because the, you know, I don't have an update, so.
I will relate to them.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to point out that we have a standing committee that is Town Council, Board of Ed, RTM and City of Grotton meeting. And it happens to be Wednesday night. It's the, the night after our council meeting. And there are several counselors that attend. Representative Chase attends on behalf of the RTM. People from the city are there. Chairperson Watson runs the meeting. And we report back when we hear these things to the counselors at our meeting. So you are welcome to attend that as well. That's Wednesday night at 5:30 is the next joint meeting. So please feel free to come into that. The link for it is on the Board of Ed website. Committee reports. I don't have anything from committee of the whole personnel appointments. Chairman Melendez is not with us, but we took care of the items in the consent calendar earlier. Rules, Chairman Overy?
I think I covered most when I talked before. I didn't wait for the right time. But we're anxious for the review that's coming up by the council.
Okay, so you, you urge all of us to read through the rules that you, Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Parker have worked so diligently to put together.
Please, it'll make it much easier when we do talk about it as a group if everybody's looked at it and mocked it up.
Thank you. Public safety, Chairman Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As was discussed tonight, there have been several public safety committee meetings over the last, you know, few weeks. We've tried to meet on a bi-weekly basis. So, you know, worked out to about two meetings per month. We are deliberating really on two topics. As was mentioned earlier this evening, the topic of establishing a civilian police review board. The committee has had discussions in an open and transparent manner. As I've indicated at every single committee meeting, the public is entitled to participate. And if there are any, any individuals in the community, and that includes police officers, that would like to voice their concerns about what we are doing, they are more than welcome to not just attend our meeting, but to participate and voice their concerns. I, I've stated that from the get-go. I will continue to stand by that and I welcome that. So I've heard several times this evening that, you know, there has been a gap in communication amongst committee members as well as police officers. And I would just like to state on the record that, that is, again, anything but always willing to meet with the police officers, not just on, on their time, but certainly I welcome police officers to meet on our time as well. So with that being said, we will be meeting actually tomorrow in it with a, in a joint meeting with Cork, which is a bipartisan RTM committee that consists of several committee members, including its chair, Representative Vian Thomas. And I also know Sima Eben has been a very active member as an ex, as a very active ex officio member as she is the RTM moderator. So I, I think it's important to obviously continue that collaboration, considering ultimately anything that could come out of the town council would ultimately have to go before the RTM. So they're, you know, getting a consensus with them is important in my eye. And they have been very active in research on the topic of establishing a civilian police review board as well as a meeting with our police chief, as we did last week, on policies and procedures, as well as obviously his thoughts on establishing a review board. So again, all are welcome to participate and attend. I really welcome, again, anyone in the community to be active and interested on these issues. So with that, I have nothing further unless, you know, folks have any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. All right, we are on to new business. 10A, 2021-28 Sealy School Property Concept Plan Review. This is on page 22 in your packet. And I think we're on Counselor Parker.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Resolutions to approve the concept plan for the former William Sealy School property. Whereas the town of Grotton has been marketing the former William Sealy School property for over a decade. And whereas a public hearing was held by the town council and the sale of the property was authorized by the town council and not vetoed by the RTM, Representative Tom meeting. And whereas the town of Grotton entered into an option to purchase for the eventual purchase of the property by Don Mar Residential LLC on April 17th, 2020. Whereas a, as a condition of the option agreement, the developer had to submit a concept plan, proposed approval and construction schedule, description of requested technical assistance from the town, a list of submitted information requiring confidentiality and a detailed description on how the development will complement the existing neighborhood and minimize lighting impacts to adjacent properties to the town council for review and approval. And whereas Don Mar Residential LLC presented the concept plan and supporting material to the town council at the Committee of the Whole meeting on September 22nd, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the concept plan for the property as presented. I so move.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Overy. Any discussion on this item? We had discussion in committee of the whole. Hold on one second. Oh, Mr. Bird, it looks like. Thank you very much. We are at nine counselors. Counselor Melendez is here as of 22. Thank you. And as I was saying, we discussed this. 22, thank you. Um, and as I was saying, we discussed this, um, at length in committee of the whole. And I thank, uh, Mr. De Joya for joining us this evening. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 20 School Property Concept Plan Review. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Baumgartner, Bordelain, any abstentions? Zero abstentions. So we have, um, seven in favor, two opposed Baumgartner and Bordelain and zero abstentions. So that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. De Joya for coming out tonight. All right, we are on to 2020 5961 2020 State Homeland Security Grant Program, M O A. This is on page 23, and I believe this is Counselor Franco.
It is. Thank you. Make a resolution authorizing entering into a memorandum of agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and the Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and the Homeland Security in Town of Groton, whereas the town, whereas the Groton Town Police Department plans to utilize the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Grant Funding to support regional set aside projects. And whereas the memorandum of agreement and authorizing resolution is a requirement for receiving Homeland Security Grant Funds. And whereas the documents detail use of local Homeland Security Grant Funds and the administration of the DEMHS Region Four Homeland Security Grant Program and the details terms of custodial ownership of asset purchased with regional homeland security funds, now therefore be resolved that the town of Groton may enter into with the delivery to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services, Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents, which is deems to be necessary or appropriate and further resolve that John Burt, the town manager, the town of Groton is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Groton and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to executing and delivering all all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. I so move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. And again, this item came before us at committee of the whole.
Right.
And I see no hands. So we will vote. All those in favor of 2025 96 State Homeland Security Grant Program, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. We are on to 2024 312 Retiree Colas. This is on page 24 in your packet. And I believe this is Counselor Heed, please.
Make a resolution approving adjustments to retiree pension benefits, whereas the pension agreement agreements slash retirement plan for Town of Groton employees and the non-union police for police, sorry, let me restate that. Whereas the pension agreements, retirement plan for Town of Groton employees and the non-union police, police, AFSCME, GMEA, non-union USWA and CTA, or sorry, GTA labor groups provide for review of retirement benefits periodically. And whereas the last adjustments were effective July 1st, 2018, whereas the town council is considering information for all groups relative to the effect of a 1% increase on annual benefits. Unfunded actuarial accrued liability, the town funding costs now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves an increase of 1% for all qualified retirees having been retired for at least five years effective July 1st, 2020, or is authorized by collective bargaining agreements. And it be further resolved that the town manager sign necessary collective bargaining agreements, plan documents to enact the 1% increase. And may it be further resolved that the town manager or his designated is authorized to take any additional steps if necessary to effectuate the 1% increase. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second Franco.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Once again, this was discussed in committee of the whole. Counselor Melendez.
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize for arriving late, um, to everyone, and I'm happy to support the Colas, the increased Cola. Thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us, Counselor Melendez. We appreciate the effort that you took to, um, be here for us for this important vote. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2024 31 Retiree Colas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? That motion passes eight in favor, one opposed, heed, zero abstentions.
Correction, Madam Mayor, I believe there's only eight of us here. I don't see Counselor Zepuri.
One, two, three, four, five. Oh, I didn't see him leave. Thank you, Counselor Bordelain.
Welcome.
Madam Clerk, did you note the time when Counselors Zepuri left?
It was just three minutes ago.
Three minutes ago. Thank you very much. All right, let me note that. So you've got that recorded. So we are back to eight as of 8:25. Thank you, Counselor Bordelain. Good eyes. Okay, so we are eight counselors. So seven in favor. I'm sorry?
Must be these new glasses. It is a change of perspective as well. I'm not lying.
Let me finish the vote. Okay, so seven in favor, one opposed, heed, zero abstentions. All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, other business. I have other business this evening that I need to talk to you all about. Um, and which paper? It deals with the agendas, okay, and coming up with, um, all the things we have to be dealing with. We have a lot of work to do and we have some very tight agendas. So I just want to go through a couple of dates with you and then I need to ask you a question. All right, so on the 13th, which is our next cow. We have the rules discussion and vote. We have a grant that we have to take care of. We have scenic road and TIF policy that we have to take care of. We have to set a public hearing for excess property Groton Heights. We have Mystic Education Center, something we have to deal with, with them and a tax, tax item. We have a presentation from something called Nava Retail, which are the people that are doing the research for economic development and talking to our local businesses. So all of those things need to be done on the 13th. And what my original intention was, when I sent out all the information on short-term rentals, I sent the packet out and Counselor Aubrey, yes, I will resend. I, I sent it to everybody. I don't know how it slipped through, but we'll do it again. The intention was to schedule that for that same night. I think it's too much for that night. So my suggestion would be to back that off and take care of all the other things that are mainly economic development things that we have to take care of and rules. So we'll deal with rules, we'll do with the, we'll deal with economic development things and the things that are on a deadline. Okay? That would mean that on the 27th, okay, which is our next cow, the end of, end of the month, we will have as our guest, First Selectman Cheeseborough from Stonington to discuss the North Stonington Road Bridge. We will be talking about coastal access. We, we had pushed off road funding till that evening. And, and then that would be the next time that we could have short-term rentals. Now, as, as you can tell, we're going to have one guest already with the First Selectman from Stonington. That will be a long discussion. I'm sure coastal access will be intense. Road funding definitely will be. Do you want me to add on short-term rentals that night? Now, before you, before I pull you to get a response, um, my intention was to bring back the people that gathered all that information that I sent to you, as well as a couple of property owners that let their properties and have them available for you to have a discussion and for you to kind of make a preliminary decision as to if you wanted to pursue it or not. So that to me would be a good chunk of time. And I don't know if you want to hold off even further and go to November with the short-term rental so that we can take care of, um, our, our guests and First Selectman Cheeseborough, the road funding issue, coastal access issues. Okay, so there, there's the thing we have to think about. So when do you want to do short-term rentals? Knowing that we have all these other things that are both timely and things that you've been wanting to do for a while. So, I see Counselor Franco has her hand up. So we'll take everybody's two cents on this and what you would prefer.
Thank you. So it's 8:30. We're two hours into our meeting and basically all we covered, I mean, today was pretty quick meeting. So on a normal night, I think at about 8:30 is where we start our normal business. And, um, I just think that there's a lot that's coming up and I think anything that could go and wait should wait. And if it's short-term rentals, even the rules, I don't think there's any urgency to changing the rules. I don't know if that needs to come up so quickly. So I would put things that are absolutely like more important and prioritize that and maybe push some other things out that just, I don't think there's an urgency for. That's what I would push all those out. Or even if you're going to put rules on the agenda, put it last, because if we're at 11, 12 o'clock at night, we might not want to touch that one and take care of the important things first. Just that's my opinion, but.
So you would be okay with postponing short-term rentals till November cow?
Yes, because I don't see an urgent need for that, an answer right now.
Counselor Bordelain, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Franco. I think rules and, um, short-term rentals could be moved. And handle all the time sensitive information that way. I think it's important that, you know, the meeting doesn't feel rushed. And towards the end, you know, if we could do full deliberation and make sure we can have our full time to discuss, uh, information, especially with the Stonington First Select Woman coming. And, uh, I think it'd be important to have the time, um, and the other, you know, the roads and all those important housekeeping items. And, uh, we have rules currently. Some may not like them, but I think it's important that we, we can roll with what we have and, um, look at those as well as the short-term rentals come November. Thank you.
So I'd like to hear from the rest of the council as well. Um, in particular, I'd like to hear from Chairperson Aubrey. So your preference?
I wouldn't have a problem with putting it at the end of the meeting so that if it is running late, we could, you know, do it another time. But, uh, there has been quite a bit of time put into it. So, um, personally, uh, I don't think we're going to be laying any roads right away. So I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, putting the roads off for a little bit. Till we have a, a better opportunity to discuss that.
Okay, um, I'm just going to go through Counselor Heed. What's your preference on this, please?
Uh, I think we should be able to postpone anything that's not urgent.
So you would be okay with postponing till November?
Yeah, spread it out.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner, what is your preference, sir?
Um, I'm comfortable going, you know, whenever you had laid out initially, I'm comfortable with, you know, pursuing. You know, I, I think the roads are obviously important to, to deliberate on. Um, you know, in times past, we've talked about, uh, issues with coordinating meeting with the leadership from Stonington. And so we have an opportunity to do so. So I would, you know, obviously like to continue those discussions because I think everything is interconnected, especially when we start analyzing the finances and just the nut, and the nuts and bolts of the projects, various, um, you know, bridge projects and road resurfacing projects. It's really going to take a coordinated discussion. So, um, I would not encourage the council to put off that discussion. I also think deliberating on the rules is very important, um, considering that, um, you know, we have that opportunity to, you know, to talk about these rules changes when it's been fresh on my mind. It's fresh on Counselor, uh, Chair Aubrey's mind, as well as Counselor Parker's mind. Um, we've been, you know, talking about these, um, these rules changes now somewhat regularly for the past few months. So I would hate to kind of put those, you know, that work, um, aside when we, we spend a lot of time, uh, every month deliberating on, on, um, you know, potential rules changes and really trying to make a good faith effort to, um, you know, to propose rules that would be, um, uh, support, could be supported by everyone on the council. Um, we would like something that would be supported, um, with, you know, unanimous. So, um, again, um, we should talk about, um, you know, the, moving forward, we should talk about the rules and the roads. That, that's a priority of mine. So I would encourage us to be, remain focused on that. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Melendez, do you have a preference on, um, any of these items I've discussed, sir?
I mean, I, I, I trust the judgment of the mayor and the manager and, uh, I, I, I don't have any issue with long meetings. So, uh, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, move to postpone anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Parker?
I'm okay with short-term rentals being in November. I'm okay with the rules being at the end, but we do need to discuss those. I, we did take a, we did do a lot of work on those and I think it would help us move along. And everything else I'm, I'm fine with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then, um, I've, I've made notes and we have the record of the meeting and Mr. Burt and I will, um, meet and figure out what we need to do. But we are going to keep with the timely stuff, um, for the October 13th meeting. We can't put off any of the items that we had scheduled there. So, all right, very good. That's all the other business that I had. Mr. Burt, did you have anything? I'm going to open it up to the council otherwise.
I slid something to this thing that we just discussed. Uh, I had my hand up, but I can wait.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Counselor Bordelain, did you have something to discuss with, um, the agendas?
Yes, I did. I apologize. Um, I just wanted to say I'm all for long meetings. So I'm fine with that. I just, and I agree with Counselor Melendez as well. I just don't want to feel rushed through the items when we're saying, well, it's eight o'clock and we got five more to get to. So the only reason for my suggestion to move things to spread them out would be for proper deliberation and not feeling that urgency to rush and full deliberation can happen. So that's my only thing. So if we go with a big agenda, then understand that, um, if things need to be discussed about, I don't, would not, I would appreciate if we could get to them all and, and allow, um, the full, um, chance to talk. Thank you.
You're welcome. There, there are certain things that we, we have to do as far as timeliness. There are deadlines that have to be met. So, you know, some evenings we have to put a lot on the agenda just to, to make government work and to do our due diligence. So that's why sometimes we have many items on the agenda. Counselor Aubrey, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, in November, I know we have enough for now, but I really would like to finish up on the tax abatement program for surviving spouses of a police officer. I think we just have to, uh, basically maybe refresh our minds on it and take a vote.
Okay, if you, I, I made a note, but if you could, um, send an email that you would like to see that in November, um, I will try to get that on to.
Sure.
I, I don't have it that far out yet. Um, the first cow would be the week after. So that would be the 10th would be the first cow in November. So tentatively that would be the short-term rental day. Um, so perhaps we could fit it in that same evening. Okay, um, any other business? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second, Heed.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heed. And what are we at? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We are at eight counselors. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? Who wants to stay? Any, one opposed? Any abstentions?
I was just joking. I was just.
Any abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed. We are adjourned at 8:41. Thank you all for coming out and doing your work, Counselor, or Madam Clerk. Good to have you back and everybody be well and take care of yourselves. Good night.